Ready when you are, Judge.
Thank you. If I could ask everyone to please rise for the invocation and the pledges, please. And Commissioner Chesney is going to lead us in the invocation.
If you'll bow your heads in prayer. Dear Lord, we are so grateful for all that you've given us and all that you've done for us. Lord, as we approach the Christmas season, help us to remember that Jesus truly is the reason for the season. We're so appreciative of His life and His dying on the cross for our sins. We ask that you bless all of the county employees and all the elected officials and department heads and everyone today and for all the holiday season as they travel and do the things that they're going to do. We ask that you help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of those that we serve. We ask all these things in your Son, Jesus Christ's name, as we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is Tuesday, November the 19th. We are at 901 Leopard in the Oasis County courtroom. And we have Commissioner Chesney, Commissioner Matus and myself present. Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Gonzalez are not here. I will call this meeting to order at 9:10. We have a quorum. Did we have any? I think there are no action items, so there shouldn't be any announcements of disclosure of conflicts of interest. Did we have anyone sign up for public comment? No? Thank you, Edward, in the back. Moving on to the regular agenda item A1 to canvass and declare the results of the November 5th, 2024 general election in accordance with Chapter 67 of the Election Code. And the county clerk has provided us with the report for each precinct. I will make everyone aware, we have received a request to recount in the Constable Precinct 1 race. All parties have been notified, but this is not the official petition for it. The canvas will continue with all elected parties being canvassed today. Yes. Anything you need to add?
Clarification or question for clarification?
Yes, please.
For you, Judge, or the county attorney or the county clerk? So, we still will canvass and declare the results, but then?
They have been notified.
It's still allowed, I mean, just because we're taking this action, it doesn't impact that?
And if nothing changes in the recount, then this canvas counts towards its going forward. If it changes, we will have to bring that one race back for a recanvas.
Right, and you can't petition for?
Until after the canvas.
Until after the canvas and the certification.
So this is just part of the process, yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And all parties have been notified, like we were supposed to.
This is our first, isn't it, Karen?
And the petition has until Friday at 5:00 PM to file. Yes.
Judge, I would make a motion to canvass and declare the results of November 5th, 2024 general election in accordance with Chapter 67 of the Texas Election Code.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Judge, I just wanted to say too, what a great job the county clerk and her staff did in running the last election. That was overwhelmingly large election with a huge, huge turnout. And I didn't have anybody call me and have any complaints about anything, and maybe they just didn't call me, but just wanted to... No, I mean, seriously, I mean, usually we get them, so if there's something wrong. But I just wanted to compliment you and your staff on a great election, so good job. Please pass that on.
I will, and thank you. I just want to thank my team, and I have amazing staff and all the poll workers and the locations that allow us to be, election locations, so, yeah, so everyone, it's a team effort. It's not alone, and so...
I appreciate you saying that. I meant to include the worker, the poll workers. I include them in your team.
Yeah, no, and they are, they are, so can't do without them. I appreciate all they do.
Absolutely, yes.
And thank you for your support.
Yes, and our office in Tara and all the work that our office did on selecting the locations and the workers, and yes. So, it was a great job, great combined effort, yes. Thank you very much.
Everybody did great. That's all I was trying to say.
Yes.
I left anybody out, I'm sorry. Everybody was awesome. Everybody was awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
Everybody was awesome.
And moving on then to item two, discuss individual and countywide projects for the MOU options related to obligating our American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. And I believe we all received a printout of that. There have been several meetings with the departments. I'm not sure if you have any questions. We do have them here. If you haven't met with Grant Works or Grants about your projects. Maybe, did y'all get a chance, Amanda, to meet it with everybody on the projects on this list, on y'all's?
We have not with Commissioners one-on-one just yet.
Okay.
We are happy to do that after today's discussion. I think that would be helpful.
Well, I think, as you have it on here, is the safest way for us to proceed forward with this amount of time as well, so...
So what is this, Teresa?
The different MOUs that we will have with IT, the medical examiner. This was the suggestion, have a separate MOU with the medical examiner, separate MOU with the Sheriff's Office, Human Resources, Inland Parks and Public Works. Was there another one? Oh, Coastal Parks, yes. Uh huh, thank you. But this is, Teresa's been in on all of these. I have been set in on several of these. And I believe moving forward, the balances we have, having opportunities to spend it on and what's been explained to us. If these little balances, if they're small amounts later, we can combine to do an already bid-out project, an alternate, if we have enough funds or something that we can put this on in the future. If you don't have a space or if your project fails, anything that has already been bid out can be allocated to that. If it, you can't create a new scope of work, but the alternate or alternate one, I think there's some that have multiple alternates on, some of the projects have.
So, question?
Yes.
On the Coastal Parks MOU, I understand, I guess they didn't get the...
The equipment, they couldn't get it in time, so this is just a safety net to make sure.
Okay, and then why is there an MOU recommended on the second one, on the pier? I thought...
So for the pier, we are recommending the MOU because of the amendment hasn't been to court yet. So what we've recommended is that...
Which amendment?
The amendment for Bob Hall Pier with the actual amount of money stated in the amendment coming from ARPA funds. So, since this is a large project and there's a lot of braided funds in it, we would recommend that in an amendment, there's a clear line that says this is how much money from ARPA is being contributed to this project. And right now, that amendment is like at 2.289 million. So that was the email that we had sent a couple days ago at Michael and Jason. They were working on the amendment. So that's supposed to be in court.
What I don't get is, what, tell me what's, so I know that I have more money, more money, great problem to have than I thought, based on all the emails going back and forth, but I don't know why you think the 2.289 has not been brought to court? Because everything's been voted on and brought to court for the 2.289?
So in the contract, in the Bob Hall Pier contract, it does not clearly state how much ARPA funds are being contributed to that project.
In the Bob Hall Pier contract?
With Callan Marine, yes.
So, that has to be in the contract even though the amount was allocated to the contract? Because that's what I thought we were told we had to do, was just to allocate it and be under contract, since that, and that is under contract, you're just saying?
It is under contract.
Sorry, just, but why do, but why do an MOU and not just do a contract amendment?
So we would recommend the amendment first, but it hasn't been brought to court yet. It's planned for court for 12/11, but just as a safety net, since that's the last court of the year.
Sure.
We're just saying that we would recommend it in an MOU, just in case, better safe than sorry, but, you know.
Unless the amendment gets done on the 12, so we need, your thought is we need to do a contract amendment on 12/11? And has Callan been told that? Or has someone who, whoever's doing the contract, Jenny or whoever?
My understanding is that Michael and Jason have been working on this amendment. We've seen the amendment, and it just hasn't been brought to court yet. Because another thing is the amount is changing, so it's hard for them to put that amount in the amendment because then it changes and they don't want to, you know, keep changing it, so that's been the issue.
Okay, so what, who's working on that, who's working on the contract amendment? The county attorney? I would assume that's a contract, so I'm going to look to you.
I believe so.
Because I'm trying to avoid MOU, and I guess I'm going to have to do one unless I can figure that out? Because I thought I was done at the last meeting and had everything done until back and forth that we've had this week on...
The only reason we wouldn't have it, Commissioner, is if Jason is still working, Jason and Michael in purchasing. You know, they have this down really well also, and so usually by the time we get it, it's pretty well finished, especially with everything we've worked on.
So do I need to put that on as an agenda item for the next meeting? Or will someone else do that? Because I don't want that to slip through the cracks either.
It should be purchasing, Commissioner.
Okay, so I'm going to, I don't see Michael here, so I'm going to assume someone's going to tell Michael he's got to put this one on. And I would ask that we do this. I'm, I get why you're doing the MOU now, but I would rather do it as a contract amendment and get that approved and the judge to sign and all that, because I'd like to tidy that up. Now, I do have some more questions on that, on that particular thing, but...
I am getting notified live that we have already done our part on that one.
Isn't that cool, that live time, whatever that's called?
It is awesome.
Real time, so technologically savvy over there, the county attorney. Okay, so you had put some money in Bob Hall Pier when we did that, because you switched something?
Switched the EOC out, because we, and you gave me Harvey money. That's what made it higher. And I think that may be what they were waiting on, because a couple of times, you know, we had talked about changing.
But it may be a lot, oh, that's what it is, that's right.
Six hundred thousand or something, it was one, yes.
Because the 500 is from the port, so my question too is, Judge, is, did we, when you allocated it, you allocated it towards the...
The pier, I think we talked about, yeah.
So I'm wondering if we need to clean that up, too?
As part of the MOU, I think it will.
Well, or as part of the...
Contract, yes.
Whatever we do, it'll be in the contract, but we may need to clear it up because it would probably be better if all the ARPA money was on one part of the pier.
That's exactly what they were talking about, yes.
That's our recommendation, because it's really hard to, you know, split expenses.
Totally agree. So, so we probably need to clean that up in the next meeting because I think your motion back then was just to switch out and put it on the pier. Whereas now, it looks like it's, on here, it's all on this. So that'll be part of that cleanup, because there's 2.289, and then the 500,000 that the port gave, we'll have to make sure that, you know, they're, I think they're fine with whatever, but we still need it. But we need to flip that to where that's going to go to the pier, to where all the ARPA money's going towards the third-party concession airspace, right? Okay, so do we need to do anything else?
Say that again, Commissioner?
Say that again?
What did you just say?
Well, because originally, the 2 million, and then I've added some, was mine, the judge's and the port. Then the judge put, I can't remember how much, 600, and we switched some money. But I think she put it towards the pier when we did that. So I'm just wanting to make sure we cleaned that up too, because now the port's money would go towards the pier and all of the ARPA funds would go towards the third-party concession air to keep it clean.
It's just the opposite. They're wanting all the ARPA monies to go to the pier and the additional funds to go toward the concession.
Who's "they"?
ARPA, they're recommending, Grant Works is recommending that the ARPA funds are dedicated to the pier itself and not the concessionaire.
Okay, well, that's not what this says. This says reconstructing the pier and a county-owned building used as a third-party concession air.
So, our recommendation would be to not split expenses, like you were saying, because it's hard to follow, right? And when an auditor comes in, you want to make sure that the story tells itself, right? So, we would recommend that whatever decision is made, obviously up to you guys, that it's clear on where the money went.
Are you okay if it all goes to the restaurant? Because that's going to be, then, you have an issue, that's going to go back to your, not...
I traded my money out. It's your money now. I got Harvey money out of it.
No, but it's not...
Yeah, it's not, it was not my vote, yes.
Right, and so that's, so is there, to me honestly, the amount of money that we have is probably what's, it is probably the amount of money that's going to take to build that third-party concession airspace. So to me, unless you think that's a problem, telling the story is going to be a lot easier because you're going to say it all went to one place. If you put it on the pier, it's going to be 10% of the pier value, and that's going to be, I think that's a mess for an auditor to look at. So, but you're saying, Teresa's just said you wanted to go towards the pier and not the concession space?
Yeah, so we've had this recommendation, and it's because the pier and the county-owned building, the pier could fit in, so as you know, the county-owned building, we've suggested that that goes into 6.1 revenue loss. The pier could also fit into a different category. That is for like open spaces, green spaces, neighborhood features. We think that that could fit into that category for eligibility. So we think that the pier could be a stronger eligibility case than the county-owned building. Now, the county-owned building, we do believe...
Is totally lost revenue.
Yes.
It fits in that category 100% because we're losing, we lose revenue by not having that. But do we need the lost revenue category? Because my understanding is we weren't even close on hitting our lost revenue cap.
It's growing. That's the other issue, is that as money moves into Bob Hall Pier, that 10 million...
But we should be done. I mean, we don't have any more to, right? I mean, it, growing is fine. We can go to the 10 million. Are we, how close are we?
It was, what did we say, Teresa? It was like seven, 7 million?
It was 6 before, so now it should be 7 or 8.
Well, let's say, let's say it's 7.5. We don't have 2.5 more million dollars to even allocate, so why are we worried about it? No, I'm asking, like, asking, I'm not being critical, I'm just seriously asking, why do we care? Because to me, keeping it all on one part of the pier that's completely...
Well, I was told something different, Commissioner. I was told we wanted to keep that available in case something got turned down in another allocation, that we could always put it into lost revenue.
It's always a good idea to keep.
Keep an opening, yes, 2.5, yes.
Right, we have 2.5 million still before we hit the $10 million cap. What do we, like, that gives us 2.5, I mean, I, I mean, this is, this, just remember our original discussion, Judge, and I'm trying to keep that clean because I don't want, I don't want you to...
I appreciate that very much, thank you.
I mean, that was, that's a big, that was a big, big deal to you, and I don't really want to, I'll be honest, I don't want to mess with this. I mean, unless somebody gives me a more compelling reason, I think we need to keep it all on the concession space. I mean, because that, that was what the judge and I worked out over six months of, you know, discussion and...
Torture.
Yeah, torture, and, yeah, I mean, that's, not between her and I at all, but torture for the rest of us in life. And so I'm a little leery of doing that. I mean, I mean, if we don't have any cap, if we're pushing up and we're 500,000 away or 300, I mean, but if we're still 2.5 million from our lost revenue cap, aye, 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 I'd like to keep it. Because there's definitely a public space element to this building. I mean, it's not green space, neither's a pier, but I mean, the building is purely accessible by the public. So I don't, I don't know why it would be not in that category, maybe not as strong as the pier. But I mean, you have to, you have to pay to go on the pier, you have to, you can go in the restaurant, you don't have to buy anything. You can go sit on the deck and have a glass of water, whatever you want to have, or, you know, whatever. So I don't know why that building would be looked upon differently than the pier, because it's all public space. Or it's the same, and it's got the same, so I don't, I don't, I wouldn't suggest, I'm sorry, I'm beating the dead horse, but I don't, I don't suggest changing it unless y'all tell me.
I've got one other item to consider on that one, if you'll hear me out. The timing, the funds need to be expended by the end of 2026. Are we confident that if this money is dedicated to the third-party concession airspace, that construction will be complete by the end of 2026?
If it isn't, you won't have to worry about me sitting here anymore, so yeah, the answer is yeah. It should, by contract. Well, believe me, I think they'd kick me out. The, yeah, the contract, it's contractually obligated to be completed by the end of '25. So if it bleeds over into the first part of '26, but I don't think it's going to be the concessions. Honestly, I think the pier is more likely to go longer over than the restaurant space because that's a much easier build. I mean, that pier's 960 linear feet into the ocean, the building's on land. So I think, I think the pier's more likely to run over than I do the building. And I don't think it will. Please don't say that it's going to. I don't want to get that out there at all. It's on, we're on budget, we're on track. It should be done by the end of '25.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And we would recommend that ARPA funds are expended as quickly as possible. So if, if, you know, if you're going towards the concession air, right, then those are the first funds that are expended.
Yep.
Lisa had a question or notation?
I was just going to say, I think that they're just trying to keep all of their options open at this point.
Yeah, I get it, but I don't want to open that option, sorry.
That's fine.
I just, that was a battle, and I'm not, I just don't think, Judge, you, I don't think you want to go through that either.
It's already been reported as well. That's something else to keep in mind. This has already been reported as a 6.1 project to Treasury, so...
It's a 6.1, sorry.
Sorry, revenue loss.
Okay, yeah, I, please keep it as that one.
Okay.
Any other questions? I know y'all have had several meetings with Inland Parks, and did you get, did you have a meeting with Public Works on their list? Or just the open items that hadn't been brought forward?
They're not here. Do you want to talk to them?
They're not here, yeah.
Well, actually, not one of mine. So Commissioner Jag is out this morning. He had some, he couldn't attend, so... He asked me to speak on what he's looking at or what he's planning. So he has, I know that we're planning to continue with like the Driscoll Building and in the MOU as is, but he's, he's going to, if the building doesn't go forward, he's going to pull his 286,000 out of that facility. He's looking at not wanting to do an MOU, but he would like, and that's still under consideration. But what he's planning to do is create two positions under his office to continue his program for the, the unit, the mobile medical unit and medical, so that's, you know, that's what his plan is. So that would be...
His plan is to create two positions?
Correct.
Which two positions might those be, since he's not here to ask these questions too?
So the two positions that he's going to create are going to be under his department. I don't know what the name of those positions are, but they're going to be for Dr. Xavier and for...
Well, let me just say for the record, I 100% do not support him creating positions under his department because it's not his department. And I do not, in 100% do not support creating two positions to keep two employees that we don't have a current need statutorily for. So that's out there. If he was here, I'd say it to him. He's not here. You brought it up. I'll 100% vote against that.
Right, but I understand they're not undermined, they're under his county commissioner precinct 3 office.
I understand, you're just a messenger, I'm not shooting you.
Wants to put them under his county commissioner precinct 3 office?
Yes, ma'am.
Like, we can all get, precinct 2, he's 2, sorry. More employees directly under him that report directly to him?
Correct. That's, that's what his proposal is.
Wow, wow.
Okay, I'm 100, I'm sorry, let me restate, I'm 150% against any commissioner creating anything that goes under him that the rest of us don't have access to.
Access to, or, yeah.
That is possibly the worst suggestion I've ever heard in the 10 years I've been on this court, so thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion on any other items? We appreciate all the work and all the meetings that y'all made time for. We know this is last minute and the scrambling around to work around people's schedules and work on projects that are moving forward, and then with the change coming in, the hold on that. So thank you very much for making the time, all of you for doing this. I think this is a good list. I appreciate it. I think it's a safety net for us moving forward. I was told at one time, I'm very glad to hear that this can be done and it keeps us from losing out on some of these projects.
Absolutely.
Look forward to December the 11th and having the contracts ready to sign. I had kind of wanted to keep the contracts a lot smaller and only have a couple of departments, but I absolutely understand after several meetings, it's just cleaner to have with the department that's going to be handling it, so...
And Judge, I guess there'll just be kind of a catch-all agenda item, some you'll put on or someone will put on so that, because I know I've got to do something, like I said, it's always nice to find a little funds, but I'll have that figured out for the next meeting. But if it's going to be a catch-all, I'm just going to not worry about putting something on. Right?
Unless you have something, because you have considerable amount of funds that you want to designate it to, I would suggest you do that now with your available funds. If not, the catch-all will be next year, any unallocated funds, we will come together as a court. If a project fails and doesn't go forward, then we can only use it on projects that have been bid out, projects that are in these MOUs, something that has already been defined in the scope of work. So we will have to go forward with those. It can't be new creating, it can't be bringing something new to the table. So if you have your money that is yours, and you can't double allocate either, let me be clear there. So you have funds that are available, and if you want to use them for next year and one of the catch-all amendments that have already gone out for bid, that's fine. But if you have a specific project, it has to be on the MOU.
And, like, what about, for example, and I'm not saying this for sure, I'm just throwing this out, while everybody's here, we have, and I got to look, right? But we have collective bargaining coming up, and I know we've used in the past funds for law enforcement, but I thought we had maxed out on that, or we back? Because we've got another year now that we could possibly, or is that just not even an option anymore? Can just someone make sure that's right? Because I mean, I know that's what we were told, but there have been a lot of things we've been told, and I don't, I just want to make double sure that since we're into another year, right? Like, but, and I know it wouldn't, and we could, you could, you could front-load it. I know you're going to say, got it all be spent by the end, well, no, it's got to all be spent by the end of '26, and it is a contract, but I know there's that law enforcement max. So I just would like to know for sure that that's been looked at and we're done on that category. Is that, do you know that for sure, or do you want to look at that and tell me later?
I do not. Let me look into that, because I'm not sure the max that you're talking about.
And I know it's a kick the can down the road a little bit because it's a one-time deal, I get that. But still, I mean, that's going to be a big issue for us, and I just would like to at least know the answer before I, before the next meeting.
But the only amount that could be even put in the MOU moving forward, if you were considering that, would be your additional funds, yeah.
Right, 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 right.
And that's not enough for it, but...
It's not enough, but it's, it's a contribution.
But we were told that it was 20% per year, 40% maximum, that we had already, we used both of those amounts up as what we were told.
But those Treasury rules have changed some, as we've gone through, we've seen changes in them. So I'm just asking you to, not, I'm putting you on the spot, I just thought of it myself. So if you can just let me know before the next meeting, it'll help me in my consideration.
I'm not sure I know about that, but let me look into that. Do you know that? No? Yeah, we, we'll look into that, though. Do you know who told you that? Just curious.
Well, it was the auditor, I know, and I may have been prior consultant, I can't remember, but the prior auditor.
Yes.
There's a lot of different rules and laws.
Right, and they've changed, and they've evolved, and it's been years now, so, I mean, I'm just, it's just an ask.
Yeah, sure. We'll look into it, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And I hate to say this, but with the mistakes, and I don't like using money like that for salaries.
I don't either, but I'm just, I'm just asking.
We just got in trouble with that as well, so, yeah. I absolutely support law enforcement, and we should do everything that we can for them. That is not my intention here with this. I just know this was hindsight.
Well, it could be for, it could be for, I don't know, maybe not salaries, but other things that somebody needs, right?
But you have an opportunity before the December 11th to get it added to the, if you have, because you have a considerable amount of funds.
Yeah, I just didn't know that was coming, and I hadn't really, I just didn't know that was, I thought it was, anyway, I'll get it figured out.
Well, it sure did help when we had that funding.
Absolutely.
I think it helped our law enforcement, it helped with retention. And when we lost that, I think that's when we saw and continue to see some of the losing of those officers to other agencies. So if we could, even temporarily, I would support it as well, but I agree, I think it was the interpretation, so we'll wait to hear what you have to say on that, but I would definitely be interested in that.
Okay.
And just for the record, I mean, there are positions that we have funded, but we did it only because it was only the two years so that we were given. I think I did that for a position for the county attorney's office for a legal secretary position. So, I mean, we've done it, it has been done, but we know that they're kind of temporary. I mean, we've done it, it has been done, but we know that they're kind of temporary fixes for now, so.
I think, and maybe it was just the way it was given as well, so maybe there's a better way to do it, yes.
Right, no, you could put it in the contract as a retention bonus on a one-time basis. That could be, you know, you could, you could style it differently, and I'm not, I'm trying not to say too much out here, because I'm, I'm getting into collective bargaining, but you, there's different ways you could do it, that it's not a, a, a long-term salary that still might be an advan, an advantage to us in that process. So I'll just leave it at that, and-
Perfect.
I just need to know if it's even doable.
Let us know some options. Thank you.
Let's do, that's it.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into it.
Natalie wants to let us know something.
I just want to add something really quick. Um, I just wanted to say thank you so much to the commissioners' court. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing Grant Works to help you guys and come alongside and partner with you all. Um, I know it's not completely done yet. We have one more meeting to get through, but I feel like this is the time to say this, because we'll probably be trying to move through business during the next meeting, but I just wanted to say thank you so very much for allowing Grant Works to be part of, um, how you guys are going to change the county, uh, the county that I live in. And thank you to the team that has represented Grant Works. You guys have done a great job. And then to the team, Teresa and Anna and Ed and, and Michael and everybody who's worked together, so just, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we appreciate it.
And Judge, I want to add to that, too. Um, Natalie, thank you for coming to our, my drainage meeting last night. I appreciate that, and thanks to your, your team, and, and I get it, you're, you're getting paid for what you do, but so did the last group, and we've had a lot less problems, to say the least. So, I mean, that's appreciated, what y'all have done, and, and believe me, I know I haven't made myself, you know, as accessible for meetings and things like that, because I just don't like to do a lot of meetings if I don't have to, because I get more done if I'm not in a meeting. But thank you all very much, and I do appreciate you coming up last, like, last night, it was very helpful. The residents got a lot out of it, so thank you very much. Thanks to all of y'all.
Good, great. I do want to bring up that we have a couple of unallocated balances that have not been committed to a project just yet. Um, so I have that precinct one currently has twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars unallocated, um, and then precinct two has sixty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Now, that includes a six thousand dollar, um, overage from the Colonia Septic System project. That project had five hundred thousand, um, budgeted to it, and four hundred and ninety-four thousand was contracted to it, so that includes that balance. Um, and then there's some unallocated in the county, um, at-
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, yep. Mm-hmm. Ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents. So altogether, uh, you guys have a unallocated balance of a hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents that have not been assigned to a project just yet. So, um, as long as we have a scope of work, um, that we can add to the MOU, we could assign those dollars to something.
Just to have our options for-
Yes, ma'am.
In the future, even if we choose to spend it on an amendment on one of the other contracted things, so that's a good point. Okay.
Yeah. Something to think about. We will be reaching out, um, before the next court. We do need to be able to put all of the, um, projects on the MOUs, so that we can get that to Jenny and her team, um, to review and be ready for court on the eleventh. So, um, I don't have a deadline in mind, but as long as we have that list of projects as soon as possible, so I'll be reaching out to everybody after this meeting.
And it's our file deadline, so we need for commissioners, not for everyone else, so that would be a deadline that would be necessary, yes.
Say that again, what was your-
Our filing for the next court, for December the eleventh, for commissioners, because yours is later than other people that wish to put something on, so the deadline for adding to the MOUs, um-
But I mean, again, are we going to have kind of, we're going to have a catch, I mean, the, the agenda item that's going to be on there will be a catch-all, right? Because I'll get, I'll get my backup. I get, I get, I guess I got to get some backup, I understand that, but-
Yes.
But the same, but other than that, the agenda items-
We can still discuss, and it can change, and what we vote on for the MOU can change as per our decisions, but we need to be able to sign those contracts pretty quickly afterwards. We don't want that to lag, yes.
Yeah, I guess my question is then, would you want the MOUs as backup for that agenda item, right? So they would be, they would need to be ready to go?
That would be a good time, yes.
Yeah, so, um-
With the holiday, what is our deadline, Teresa?
Well, the holiday is the twenty-ninth. We'll be out, and so December the second is a Monday could be the deadline, because we'll be-
Well, the court is until the eleventh.
Right, and so the third is our normal deadline, would be that Tuesday, because we'll be posting on the sixth, December sixth.
Yeah, but commissioners have till Thursday. What is the Thursday, the, the fifth? December the fifth would be the deadline for these MOUs, because commissioners can put anything on up to Thursday at noon, yes.
But departments, it would be?
Yeah, and departments won't be putting these on. These will be commissioners' projects, so, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Just as quickly as we can have them in our office, because it is not going to get completed if we get them that Thursday, and there's a stack of them. It's not going to happen.
Oh, what do you, what do you, what do you need in your office?
If we're working on reviewing MOUs and contracts and all of that, that's, that's what I'm saying, is we cannot be given a stack of those things at that Thursday.
I would assume what's on here now can go ahead. It should be already given to your office. This would just be a couple of the, like, the hundred and eighty-one or something, if we have a project.
Right, Jenny, are the templates already, okay?
We have a template that has gone around, and I believe everybody's agreed that the template is good, but, um, our work is never plug and play, easy peasy, so.
Yeah, so it would be a matter of-
Just adding the projects to each MOU, if, if the template is going to remain the same.
We did- Yes, and that sounds real quick, but I'm telling every department head and every commissioner, that's not quick, and so do not wait till Thursday, or your project is in jeopardy of having an MOU prepared.
Okay. We did send those templates on November seventh to, uh, county attorney grants in the county, so if you guys would like to start that review now with just the bare bones of the MOU, and then we can add the-
That's already been complete. It's the final thing that I am alerting everyone about.
So Jenny, you're talking about contracts, so the whole reason for the MOUs is we won't have contracts for these, so it's really just the scope of work and projects that you want to add.
And, and, and that's right, but we always have contracts, we always have things we're reviewing, so-
Oh, yes, yes.
If, you know, if it's the MOU, I'm just saying-
Yeah. It, just because a commissioner brings one Thursday for this, it's not going to have a contract attached, because that's the whole point of the MOU.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Jenny, was, was your office okay with the MOU template that was reviewed?
I believe we've already, yeah, dealt with that, the, the templates as they are.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, great, yeah. Thank you, yeah. Okay, so those templates, um, they are, um, available to be edited, how you guys would like, if there's anything you would like to add or take away in there. As long as they still meet the requirements that Treasury has put forth-
Absolutely.
Um, then you are welcome to edit those. Um, but we'll, what we'll do is we'll add the project lists as we get them, and then make sure that you guys get those, um-
Well, I believe any project that gets added to this needs to go to y'all anyway for you.
Absolutely.
I mean, your approval, just like other projects in the past, before we came for a vote, they came to y'all for, yes, okay.
We agree. That would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Michael Robinson wants to say something.
I, I wasn't present earlier for some of the discussion that was going on about , uh, items that we are potentially putting on the MOU as a backstop, just in case a contract doesn't make in time. Uh, would there be an opportunity then, uh, if we're bringing those contracts on twelve-eleven, to then strike those contract, uh, those projects from the MOU list, if we're executing them in that court on twelve-eleven?
If the contract is signed, if the contract is signed that day, the, both signatures, I can sign it that day, but if it's not, doesn't have a signature, I strongly suggest we leave it on the MOU just for security, yes.
Yeah, yeah, definitely for those, but for once, uh, for, to Brent's point on, on the Bob Hope here project, I fully expect to have, uh, his, uh, ready for court on twelve-eleven.
Contract ready for court, okay.
And so I think we'll be in a position to strike that item off and, and not have that need for it, but-
Yes, okay.
Just wanted to know if we had that flexibility.
You, you are shaking your head, you agree, lady, so we're good with that?
Yes, yes, that would be totally fine with us.
That's what I assume, because once it's been contracted, if there are amendments to that, we can still utilize the funds to go forward. If we have some leftover, another project fails, we can assign to that whatever we didn't award if the contract has been, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good, very good. This is-
Missing anything, no? Okay. Yeah, do you, Miss Anna, are there any, um, Nuasis County Grants Department's, uh, projects? Because you guys are still managing, so we manage, uh, forty-seven point nine million, the Nuasis County Grants manages twenty-two point four.
And your projects on a, yeah, you need to come, are not on the list with these MOUs then, yes. We need those projects, if you have MOUs to-
Yes, I'm, been providing, I provided a list last night to, uh, Teresa, we're working on it. There are some that we're getting clarifications, like from Public Works. I had some numbers for equipment, I had it left over, but they provided that, so there was, they purchased all the equipment, so there is nothing, uh, left over on that.
They have already purchased, or they purchased?
All the equipment.
They have already purchased, so, okay.
Purchased and received, and, uh-
And then there's leftover money and that, so we need the balances of that as well.
No, there is no more balance on the equipment. They used it all. They purchased all of the, that was allocated to them for the Public Works equipment.
Okay. Well, it's weird how they did the exact amount. That's why I was like, there's, all of us have little amounts left, did they go over, or what?
They did go over, and that's where I was telling Teresa, I need to find out what other funding source they use in order, because the expense is there, I just need to find out.
So they've already purchased something, that they went over the amount, and now they're looking for the additional funds, is what you're saying?
They purchased it, and I'm pretty sure they allo, they charged it to the other funding source. I just didn't have that with me, but I will look for it.
Okay, that, that's pretty important. We need these lists from y'all just as much with the open allocations or money left over, or anything like that, too, so.
Yes, we have, like, the Rees across America, uh, for, um, for JJ, that, um, twenty and twenty were allocated from two precincts, and they have remaining six thousand, so, um, I'm pretty sure he can spend it before then, but we can include it in the MOU. Uh, and the other positions, um, are basically, as long as they're filled.
Employees positions are, yes.
Yes, and they're, it's that amount, so we just-
And are they filled? All the other position, every position now is filled with the ARPA money?
I'm sorry, are you saying put them in the MOU or not put them in the own MOU because they're filled?
I think they said they're in the MOU.
All positions should be on the MOU for HR, all positions.
All positions, yes. But didn't they say they had to be filled before, too?
They need to be-
They need to be filled before the end of December, yes, yes.
All positions are filled.
All positions are filled, all ARPA positions are filled.
At this point, at this moment.
Okay, and the MOU provides for coverage in the event of turnover?
Yes, and to next year, but, yes, okay, perfect.
So that was basically, um, a, I need to, minor numbers that I just need to locate, uh, like, less than five hundred dollars, but I don't think, uh, everything that we had was under employees' retention pay, that's been obligated, beneficiaries that've been, you know, contracted, so it's pretty clean.
Just make sure we don't leave something off of that list, so if you have anything, yeah, we need that report from you.
Yes.
Yeah. You will meet with her and get that for us.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, I appreciate it. Is there anything else? Anyone else? Oh, yes, Michael.
Uh, I did ask earlier, Teresa, did we state what the final ARPA funding amount that's going to go onto the Bob Hope here project is? Is it, is it the two million, two eighty-nine, one sixty and forty-eight cents?
At this point.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure there was no changes. Uh, we have that document ready, and we're just waiting, uh, with Cal, and we've been working with them. They're going to give us a payment schedule. That's the only other document that goes as part of that amendment, so we'll have everything ready in time.
The discussion that you weren't here for was, I believe the feeling is still that we want to keep that in, towards, goes towards the concession building only, but that's what-
That's what that entire amount is for.
Right, because I, that's going to be about the, that's going to be about the amount I think we're going to need, and that's going to make it so much easier to have it in one fund that can come out of, plus the discussions that the judge and I have had and the court have had in regards to the political realities of the, the money.
Okay.
I don't know how else to say that.
Would, uh, we can specify, uh, that language in it next to the money amount.
Just, yeah.
Because what, the word, where it's at is we're just saying, uh, this much is other funds, and, and this specific amount is ARPA funds, and then we, right behind that, we can say for concession building only.
Right.
We can put that language in if you'd like.
Right.
Yes. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, um, the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand from London retain, retention.